There we go. Okay. We're going to call to order the April 9th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with a Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by the entire Mercy Coalition together in unison.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding Heritage Oaks Park with Kletterwald USA, also to confer with our legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Peoples Vanguard of Davis versus the city of West Sacramento, and substantial exposure litigation, the October 2018 letter from Scott Rafferty, and to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with Local 39, Local 522, and the confidential miscellaneous management, safety management, and specialists and professionals units of the city, and on all items, no action was taken. So with that, we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is precluded by state law from taking action or having a significant discussion about any items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door, and to turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, and that simply shows which item the council is currently considering. The clerk accepts the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report's concluded and the council discussion and the public testimony has begun, we don't take additional speaking cards, so if you're here, prefer, you know, item 20, and just be sure to get the card in before the conclusion of the staff report on item 20. We also recognize that for some folks speaking in public and at a microphone that is eight feet high tonight for some reason, and on television can promote some anxiety and hives and other allergy-related symptoms, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even any applause or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Nicole Ring Collins on behalf of the Mercy Coalition. And also, Don Bosley is with the Coalition as well. I have requests from both of you, so if you had a different order in mind or want to share your time together or bring everyone up all together, that's also fine.
All right. Good evening, councilman, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of the Mercy Coalition and all of the churches and the volunteers that make up, you know, in the faith community that make up that coalition. I'm really here just for one purpose, and that is to express a real heartfelt gratitude to the council for your support and your investment in the winter warming centers. We just wrapped up our 76th and final night of the warming centers, and we had a pretty great time. It was amazing program. We are in the process of assembling a very robust final report for you that will be coming to you soon with all the data and narratives if you could possibly want, but we didn't want to wait for the report's arrival to come and express our gratitude to all of you. We, all the 200-plus volunteers, the 14-plus churches that were involved in the coalition, we all recognized whole well that you took a chance on us in the fall.
Wow. That's better probably, huh? Shall I start over? You took a chance on us in the fall. You took a chance and you trusted a very untested group of do-gooders to do a program that was unprecedented in the city, and there were a thousand ways it could have gone badly, and I think a lot of us imagined what some of those might be, and we're just very grateful that you would trust us in the midst of all that, and we believe that your trust has proven worthwhile. I do want to share with you just five numbers tonight, just five. The first is this number, 2,600. That is the number of volunteer hours that went into the winter warming center, and it went into there, and that spread across five host churches and 14 contributing churches, and hundreds of volunteers from around the community, including some of you sitting up at council, which we're grateful for. It was pretty beautiful to behold the diversity of folks that were serving and the heart with which they served. Second number is this, 875. That's the final number of bed nights provided by the program. That's 875 times over the last four months that somebody didn't sleep hungry on the street, in a doorway, in a car, but instead slept in warmth and safety with a hot meal in their belly. 63, that's the number of unique individuals who accessed the warming centers over four months. 19, that's the percentage of those unique individuals who ended up with permanent housing by the time the program was over. And lastly, zero. That's the number that represents, to our knowledge, the number of complaints that were received from participating churches, the neighborhoods around the churches, and the neighborhoods around our three intake sites, zero complaints. I trust you will be pleased with all of those. We have many stories we could tell, but I just wanted to come and say thank you. We are very, very grateful. Thanks.
Thanks, Don.
Hi. My name is Nicole Ring Collins, and I was the program manager for the winter warming center, so I also want to come and tell you guys thank you so much. And my takeaway right now is that what a great opportunity this was for many, many people to come together again, and even in a bigger way, to work together in this community. I mean, there have been people, I'm still new at this, the Mercy Coalition, we're still new at this, but there have been people that have been working for the homeless in this community for decades, and so for us to be able to come alongside that knowledge and have their expertise, their heart, and then to be able to come together with all, like you said, 14 different churches, that's just the churches. There were many nonprofits, many entities, you know, people from the community that came and volunteered, and it was such a great collaborative effort, and I just think too, it's the whole thing of it takes a village. Like, we had so many people love on our guests, and it was amazing, and it wasn't just that. What came out of it too were more friendships, were more partnerships, were more relationships to be able to do bigger and better things for the homeless and underserved in this community. So I just wanted to tell you guys thank you again so much for taking a chance on us, and we look forward to next season. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Devoe. We will complete public comment, but I know there'll be some additional remarks to be made. The only disappointment I have about tonight is that we've been planning to celebrate you with a full proclamation, and so we will still do, because I think we all thought you would be sleeping tonight, given the sheer amount of effort that you've been putting in, that the last thing you would want to do the night afterwards is come to a council meeting. So we have on our schedule planned for recognition, but we'll do some of it tonight as well in just a moment. So, all right, next is Forest Gardens.
And I've been here a couple of times, and I always get butterflies in my stomach every time, so just want to mention that. So, you know, I'm a moderator of one of the Facebook groups here, and it's about 10,000 folks and growing, and there is a need for us to have a public information officer contribute to some of the discussions online, because it's a thing where misinformation can spread like wildfire, especially when you have people who are not familiar with particular subjects, start to play off one another, and I'm hoping that I can encourage the city to put in a PIO in an official capacity, so they're not using their own personal profiles when responding to certain things. There was an awesome job done a couple of months ago when the levees had some issues, and the city had a chance to jump in and help kind of calm the herd down with the levy eroding issue that was happening. That was really informative, and I realized that the city has ZenCity, which allows you folks to kind of get your fingers on the pulse of what social media is doing, you know, around town, and we're hoping that that information would turn into a two-way street, meaning that if you folks are going into social media and extracting information, then we also need the city to go into social media and help, but it's on the ground at that level. Now, I realize that SAC City Connect allows us to type in questions, and then we can get answers directly from city officials, which is very, very helpful, and so what we're doing now to kind of mitigate that information gap is sending messages through SAC City Connect and then posting that online as official comments. So we're kind of dovetailing that. But the reason why I'm here is because the road pothole issue is driving us crazy as moderators, because it is so energized, it is so furious, that people are turning to vigilantism. They're like, well, we're just going to repair the potholes ourselves. We're just going to get some concrete, and we're just going to do it. Some other folks are saying, we're just going to put flowers in the middle of the road so that we can get some media attention, and maybe the SACB or CBS 13 will pick it up. Some other folks are saying, well, we're just all going to do a group lawsuit, because we're sick of it. And it just goes on and on and on, and the thing is that we also have folks that, you know, the city, when it comes to the policy on social media, it's really clear, but it starts to get a little fuzzy when we have folks that are appointees who are also contributing to discussions, because some of us don't know if they're talking on behalf of the city or as a private citizen, and so we might need to kind of touch on that a little bit too. It's just hard, because you have, you know, one breath, hey, I'm a private citizen, and I'm resident of West Sacramento, but yet I'm also part of the city, as an extension of perhaps the city council, and this is all new breaking ground on the social media platform, and we're all trying to get our feet on our knees on how this is all supposed to work, and it's impactful. Information sharing is going left and right, and we just hope that the city might be able to kind of lockstep us in technology, and I'm out. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. And Mike Hyatt.
Yep.
And I have the document that you provided as well, so I'll share it with the council as well, because I'm not sure the whole council has a copy.
Okay. I got a feeling who is calling you. I'm not going to mention names, but I got a feeling. But what I'm tired of is my van runs its license to be on the street. Not even 24 hours later, after I move it, I get another notice. This, to me, is harassment from you, not anybody else, from you. You control this city. Why don't you control your people that work for you and say, we don't know what's wrong, but the same guy comes out twice, less than 24 hours later, I got another someone in the van again, after I moved it. This, to me, is harassment by you guys as a city. My van's licensed, it's insured, I can park it where I want. I don't need somebody telling me where I can and where I can't park, but I've gone to the police, I've gone to everybody else, and now I'm here in front of you, Mr. Caboldren. You need to get a hand on your people that work for you, find out what the hell is going on, because this is ridiculous. I can't park in front of my house, I can't park next door. You tell me where I can park. The van's licensed, less than 24 hours, I get another notice? That's BS. Somebody's using you to harass me, and then this is going to come to a stop. Well, I'm not going to look at anybody else. I'm going to have you in court for a lawsuit. Don't tell me I can't do it, because I can. This is ridiculous. I don't know what you're going to do, but you better hear it and do it, because next time, I'm going to have you in court. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, so that's all the requests under item 1A that we have. I do return to our first presentation by the Mercy Coalition, and again, just said we are going to invite you back as well, but I want to express, I think on behalf of the council, but certainly my own gratitude and admiration. I think, Don, you said something like, we took a chance on some untested do-gooders, as though you had just parachuted into the community and, you know, not launched and nurtured our teen center, or our former, the first woman to serve as the, the first Latina to serve as the vice mayor of the city of West Sacramento. I mean, the amount of roots and history and do-goodingness, or whatever the right word is, it's been tested and met so many times in the history of this community in each of your lives, that I don't think anyone was, I see a line there too, no one was surprised by the effort and the caring and the success of this. It wasn't that the people were never untested, and so, but the outcome nevertheless, and each week, each night, was inspiring. On this topic, maybe more than any other issue in our society is inspire so much hopelessness. Like, we've tried so many things, and why doesn't somebody else just fix it, and why don't they do this, and why don't they do that, always simplistic ideas, but the individuals and the churches in the Mercy Coalition said, you may say all those things too, but also said, what can I do about it, and what can I do about it tonight, and what can I do about it for her and for him and for the little one? What can I be a part of to make a difference in that person's life tonight? And so I'm extraordinarily moved for each night, watching some of my colleagues there as well, and others in the community just respond and help, or even if it's just for a moment, a moment of checking their hopelessness, just for a moment, to believe that maybe if we all step and do just one small thing, maybe, and then maybe a little bit bigger thing next, that we can make a difference in this. And maybe we don't have the solution for, you know, to implement next week. We probably don't, but we have solutions. We have many of them that can help those, one and two people at a time. So I'm just so proud of the work that you've done, and of the council and the city team and the residents for supporting, for supporting and believing in you, and you doing this with care, because, you know, it isn't just about heart, it's also about, it's also about safety protocols and liability insurance and everything else that's involved in doing good is more than just believing and a smile and a hug. It is also about all the operations and all the setbacks and everything else that are involved, and you've all handled this just so beautifully and so smartly and efficiently, and I think set a precedent in the community for folks to say, okay, look, now we have, we've done something, maybe, what can we do next? So thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and for sharing that, the entire experience with the whole community and with us this evening. And I see at least one of my colleagues, probably several writing notes down, so I think I'll ask the mayor pro tem if she wanted to make some remarks, knowing that we can't have a discussion, but we can each say something to you.
That's my red pen. Whenever it's going, he knows that I want to say something. I, like the mayor, am tremendously inspired by the Mercy Coalition and the work you do and the heart you have and the spirit you possess when you approach people in our community in any, in any capacity, whether it be with the winter warming centers, or whether it be with the lunch distribution, or any other wonderful thing that you do outside in the city limits. I had the great opportunity to visit on February 26th, and it was a rainiest night that week, if I recall correctly, and it was one of those nights when you could see it on everybody's faces, how grateful they were to be indoors, safe and warm, and I remember just the spirit of the volunteers that night, when we had tacos, and I got a really good impression of how the volunteering worked, because it seemed like there were so many people who really wanted to volunteer, that there wasn't enough volunteer positions to be had. People wanted to serve those dinners and did so with pride, and, you know, we don't have a permanent housing, a permanent shelter in West Sacramento, but what you have all done is created a vehicle by which we could see how one would work in our community. People were on a first-name basis when I went. I do recall, and I won't say any names, I just remember a comment by one of our leaders, who'd say, and this gentleman was somebody I went to high school with. It's a constant reminder that our homeless are not faceless people. These are people's sons and daughters and brothers and fathers. They are classmates in high school and members of our community, all of whom, you know, deserve to have that warm meal and a cot or a mattress to sleep on on that evening. But to tie it up, the spirit of camaraderie and the collaborative effort of all the folks through the churches and through the coalition, and that's the West SAC way, if you really, you really want to boil it down. People in West SAC are known for their willingness and desire to give back. You give them a vehicle, it doesn't matter what your politics are, what part of city you live in, or how old you are, you can fall in line and be a part of something pretty darn special, and what the Mercy Coalition has done is exemplify that in the best way. Thank you to each and every one of you for all of the hard work and all the hours and all the heart and spirit you put into this. It's very exciting to see.
All right. House Member Sandine?
Thank you. Thank you. The gesture of you coming tonight to thank us is just an example of how wonderful and generous and kind the Mercy Coalition is, and I also had the experience, the opportunity to visit, and this sense of family, the true sense of family, what really overwhelmed me. I'm so grateful that you came and put together an idea and that we were able to partner, but I really, my hat's off to you, and just sharing a few of the statistics that you did, Pastor, I'm looking forward to even learning more, but I just, tremendously, I'm tremendously grateful. Thank you.
House Member Grayo?
Well, just want to say once again, I deeply respect the love and the caring and your open arms, the light that you brought into our city. In that light, you draw a lot of other people with an interest, with the passion, but you provided the direction, you provided the leadership, and you're continuing to provide the guidance that the city needs. It's not an easy task to undergo, to, you know, you know how challenging it was to face what you were going to be doing was a monumental task all by yourself, and I got to say with very limited funding, but you made it. You made it happen. You know, you turned those few dollars into a pot of gold. You converted people's lives. You transformed our community to see that it's possible. You brought a vision, and I am deeply grateful for what you have done. There is a lot more work we have to do, and I'm here, you know, to continue to push and provide you with all the support that you need to continue on that task, you know, God's work here in our city. And I just want to applaud you and all of the volunteers, everyone that brought in, you know, whatever gift they had, you know, out of their hearts, just to be able to help those that are in need in our community. I recall speaking with somebody who was suicidal, and she said, because of the warming center, I don't feel that way anymore. And someone who had a difficult time finding meaning in a job, and she was making a ton of tamales, and she said, I want other things. So you were able to bring a conversation of hope and truth of who they are and what they could provide. They are a member of our community. They are a member of our community that can contribute meaningfully, and you provided the floor for them to do so. the floor for them to do so. So I'm deeply grateful, and I wanna continue that work with you. All of City Council, I see, wants to continue to do that work with you, and I'm very appreciative of our, the great work that, you know, they've done so far, and what we'll continue to do together. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much. And for, just for a scale, you know, sixty-three, we have, according to the point-in-time count, that's more than three-quarters of all the unsheltered homeless individuals in our community. It's a remarkable achievement. And while you were busy, we, we advanced a permanent supportive housing project through, through the city, so, you know, we have, there's much work to be done at all levels, and this is, this is the beginning. So thank you, thank you so very much. And we will hopefully see you when you come back for your full proclamation and all of the ceremony. Maybe you'll have some more, some more heartwarming statistics for us as well. So thank you so much for joining us tonight. All right, that brings us into item 1B, which is council reports. Are there reports this evening? Councilmember Guerrero.
Oh, sure. Yes. This last month, I attended the Regional Water Authority meeting. The executive director, John Woodling, retired, and they are now currently recruiting a new executive directors. So interviews will be held late April for that. Michelle Carey from the city of Sacramento was voted in on the executive committee since Jim Pfeifer stepped down. And the RWA Board adopted the fiscal year 2020 budget, and a 5% increase in general annual membership fee was approved in the budget. For the city of West Sacramento, that translates to about $1,800 increase in the membership fee. And the board also adopted a couple of resolutions regarding CalPur's health benefits to future employees, which will reduce RWA's cost. I also attended this last month, the League of Cities Sacramento Valley Division Membership Meeting with Councilmember Sandin. And we had a couple of great presentations. One was from our own city manager, Erin Laurel, who provided, you know, just incredible expertise on the enhanced infrastructure financing districts.
Wow.
Probably the only one who, in the state of California. Very good presentation showing the future of West Sacramento using the enhanced infrastructure financing district. And another on affordable home options by Steve Corle from the Community Development of Woodland, actually had some interesting perspective on how to build affordable housing. And just, I've noticed a couple of other city council member, attended the Lantern, the I Street Bridge Lantern Festival, loved it. It was very nice, impressed with the turnout and the festivities, and just the huge, you know, just display on how beautiful I Street Deck Conversion Bridge can look like in the future. And I also attended the I Street Bridge Community Workshop in Sacramento, which was also incredibly well-attended. Standing room only, not even elbow room, just, you know, packed, and a lot of participants contributed their ideas on the replacement I Street Bridge.
Terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on March 21st, and we approved entering into a local design agreement between the State of California Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency for the design of the West Sacramento federal project. And the Yolo Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, met on March 28th, and we approved adoption of the Joint Powers Agency Service Review for the Yolo Emergency Communications Agency. And taking your guidance from the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, I'm just trying to, instead of, instead of reporting on all the items, just the ones that are pertinent to West Sacramento. So we're a member of that agency, and I ask that the review be circulated to member agencies more broadly, so you should be seeing it soon. I learned, I actually learned a lot from understanding more about what the Yolo Emergency Communications Agency does, and it actually handles, as, I hope you all know, but again, I learned a lot from this, it handles all of our 911 calls, and there are data that I think you'll all find of interest. In 2018, for example, the center fielded over 56,000 calls for police attention in West Sacramento in one year, and over 4,000 calls for fire, plus 5,000 for medical issues. And there's also a recommendation to include elected officials on the JPA Board, as currently there are no elected officials serving on the Board. I believe, we believe it's allowed, but that there's, there has, has more of a presence. And also, like the animal control services, the agency is looking to build a new state-of-the-art facility. So that's also something I think we need to have on our radar. Also, the West Sacramento Basin Reclamation District reorganization proposals are currently scheduled to be considered by LAFCO on May 23rd, although that, that may be changed. But with, if that does happen, the meeting would be moved to our City Hall from the Board of Supervisors chambers.
Great, thank you. So is, was the recommendation from LAFCO is that the cities and county appoint elected officials to the YACSA?
That is in the recommendation.
I see.
There's a series of recommended actions, and that's, that was added, and now included in the report.
Right. Mayor Pro Tem Orozco.
To piggyback off of Councilmember Guerrero's report, I had the opportunity to emcee the deck conversion of the Lantern Festival. It was an opportunity for our city to really envision the future of the I Street Bridge's upper deck. It's a, pretty significant, because it's the first in a hundred-year opportunity for us to see what the, the possibilities could be for our city, both for pedestrians and bicyclists, and folks now who, you know, utilize scooters in our city to really broaden our transportation options, but also connect the two cities. And it was fascinating. It was attended by Assemblymember McCarty, Senator Richard Pan, Daryl Steinberg, and people really did express a great feeling of euphoria walking over that bridge, and really fantastic opportunity for our communities to come together. And I gave a little shout-out to Burgers &amp; Brew, Devil May Care, Macrosta, and our Inside Coffee, West Side Coffee there. It was a fantastically attended event, and so it was really great to see what the possibilities could be there. On another note, since we were on the subject of, what is it, heartwarming statistics, I got a report from the Downtown Streets Team from March, and at this juncture, our teams are still full with a waiting list of approximately nine to 10. In March, there was a total of 14,960 gallons of debris picked up from our city streets, which is, considering the fact that we had a very wet month, and when we have the rain coming down, we don't deploy our teams out, it's really not very safe for them, and certainly not pleasant, although a lot of them are very much willing to go out there. But I did get a call from ex-mayor, a former mayor and former supervisor, Mike McGowan, yesterday, who was just excited to see them out there cleaning up our streets. They are going to be launching into, spring into Employment Month, where they're going to be taking our teammates to a couple of employee job fairs, and bringing employers straight to our teams. There's also going to be a couple of Play-A-Thons, and resume building workshops, and some mock interviews with some of our team, our teammates. So we're looking forward to employing more than the six that have already been permanently employed, and look forward to an April update. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The only report I have today, we hosted the, in conjunction with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council's Site Selectors Tour. This is a, six of the principal site selector, leading, the site selector consultants in the office sector industry were brought by GSEC to the region to learn more about it. One of the surveys that was done of site selectors around the country by GSEC indicated that most site selectors, that they didn't know much of anything about the Sacramento region, other than, very generically. So this tour was organized for them to understand better the assets that we have, how the region is changing, and where some of the opportunities are, particularly given our proximity to the Bay Area. So we were one of the, we might have been the first stop today, and had the opportunity to feature the Bridge District in particular, as one of the featured sites, and share both our financing opportunities through things like the EIFD and Opportunity Zones, as well as some of the programmatic things that make this a great, you know, an interesting and innovative place for folks in the office sector and the rest of the country to relocate to, like, like the Kids Home Run, and Via, and other initiatives that are underway under city. So it was the, Mark Freeman joined us for that, for that, for that, in order to pitch the city. So with that, then, we don't have any appointments to boards and commissioners, so we're gonna move to presentations. The first, the presentation of proclamation declaring April 7th through 13th as Library Week here in West Sacramento, so is there a?
I'll move that recommended action.
Not, all right, it's been moved by Councilmember Sandin, and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Orozco. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, and that motion carries. And the proclamation is adopted, so I'm gonna ask our friends from the library, and the Friends of the Library, to join us at the podium for a presentation of the proclamation. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Sandin to join me.
Yes, I actually will read portions of this, and we have the Yolo County Librarian with us tonight, who's a West Sacramento, and are the woman who runs our local branch here, and the president of the West Sacramento Library. So thank you all for being here tonight. We're thrilled. Gosh, this is tall.
Even for you.
I know. All right. So, and this is, we're celebrating, and we just, we're proclaiming a week, but to me, a week is too few. But I know this is a national thing, so we'll stick with that, but it seems like the library's every day.
Much. Yes, please.
You can go this way. This is the one where we turn this way.
All right, it's an ancient tradition.
It's a tradition.
All right, all right. So many more people this way.
I know.
So thank you. On behalf of the Yolo County Library, I just wanna thank the city for their support of the Arthur F. Turner Community Library. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank our friends of the library that have been very active and very generous with their support of the library. And just in general, we're here to let folks know that really our library system provides resources and services for everyone in the community. Some folks think of the, think of the library as just an opportunity to get books, and DVDs, and things of that nature, but we also provide ESL Conversation Clubs, we have bilingual Storytimes, we have early literacy kits that families can take home, and, you know, work on their early literacy kit, their early literacy skills at home. We also have support, support resources in the library for teens that drop in after school, and we have free programs for all ages. So I just wanna, again, let people know that the library of today is a little different than maybe the library that you might, that you may remember, so stop by. Our resources are free for everyone. And we also recently dropped fines for youth, so youth can borrow materials, and there is no charge. And we were able to do that with the generosity of the Board of Supervisors, and also just reduce barriers to access of the resources for, for everyone in the county. So thank you for your support.
Thanks, thank you.
And we'll continue to do great work.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Orozco.
I just wanna thank the folks from our local branch. I have little boys that have these quarter-sheet pieces of paper on our shelf, because we're in a speed race with one another to read five books outside of school, so they can get an In-N-Out burger. So thank you for that motivation and incentivizing for them. But I do have to say, I, I was pleasantly surprised when the boys were very little to go over to our library and see all the kits that you have, whether it be Dragons or, you know, Manners. There are so many wonderful resources that are outside the box for our parents and our, and families, and so you've done a great job. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Of course. I just wanna say thank you very much for the community service you provide, and making, you know, reading and all the other services in the library accessible. You do a great job, but Friends of the Library also to try to get, try to reach out, and try to bring people in through your efforts. So I am involved, um, with the Friends of the Library, and appreciate being able to access all the community services you have there. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming tonight, and just, just one correction, you said it's not the library you remember, and it is the library I remember, it's just much, much more. But everything you loved about the library growing up is still there. It's just a more, it's a bigger, more diverse community with a lot more resources to be had, and a lot more fun. So thanks for being a part of it, and thanks to the Friends, and to the, and to the team, and to Mark for, for your leadership. All right, that brings us then to the Consent Agenda, which is items four through 11. Are there any items in the Consent Calendar to remove, or any items for separate question or comments?
Yes, items seven, eight, and 10.
Okay, any others?
And are we, we're just dispensing with item three?
We do need to do item three. All right, so we'll, yeah, we're returning to the Consent Agenda. Thank you for, thank you for pointing that out. So item three is the proclamation to recognize the importance of the 2020 census. Is there a motion on that?
So it moved, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. The Complete Count Team is not here tonight, so we're not, we don't have a presentation to make of the proclamation, but we will, in conjunction with other, with the other jurisdictions in the county and the region, the Complete Count effort is, actually, this, this week is fully underway, and it's obviously very, very important here in West Sacramento that we be fully counted, and that our, that our contribution, both at the city level to the, to the count, but really throughout the community, the community organizations, the library, Downtown Streets, everyone in the city, it needs to be a part of the Complete Count efforts, both to make sure that everyone's, everybody is counted for purposes of figuring out what are the right policies and services, but, you know, also to make sure we have enough numbers for getting our benefit-cost ratio on the flood project as high as possible, and things like that. You know, just having the sheer population often is important in the funding formulas that support our basic services here. So it's the patriotic thing to do in our, in our city, is to make sure that you participate and help others participate in the census, and I, and I know that our partners are gonna be a big part of that, so. All right, so they can, so we're back to the Consent Agenda, and we have right now seven, eight, and 10. Any others? Okay, then with that, item seven is consideration of approval of a group amendment, number one to the contract for professional services with Domenichelli and Associates for the State's Re Water Capacity and Sewer Rehab Project, and Resolution 1920 approving a budget appropriation of $600,000. Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Hello.
I do have some questions regarding the project, and looking that it's really narrowed down to a few streets at this point in time, the assessment of the laterals, and taking a look at the residential aspect of the laterals, if, for example, you know, they inspected that they also need to get changed, would it be possible to have a program in place so that they can, instead of waiving the permit to get them replaced, but to have something to, you know, to fund? Because it's gonna be a big project, and it'd be a great opportunity for the residents in the neighborhood to have their fees waived, or, you know, a way to be able to get something to recoup their cost for a permit.
So if I understand you correctly, you're asking for sewer lateral replacement on the homeowner's side?
On the homeowner's side, yeah. So if it's gonna be changed on the city's side, and then, you know, they do, they, they might as well do an inspection on their own, those homes are very old, to see if they can get theirs replaced, and, you know, try to get, so it's a kind of like fixing up and aesthetically making everything better there.
Oh, well, that's a great idea. We hadn't thought of that, and so, that's- We hadn't thought of that, and so that's something we should think about, how to make it so homeowners could replace their own laterals at the same time if we have someone out there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I could chime in on that also. I got a little more information on the lateral issue.
Thank you.
So, I can't confirm when a homeowner replaces their own lateral, in this case, at their cost. There's an inspection done on the city's side, on the city lateral, and if it's deficient, we replace it at the same time as part of that process. But I think what you're suggesting is something that would be more of a neighborhood improvement program that would be encouraging people to replace sewer laterals. So, that's just something we would want to, you know, depending on, an opportunity to talk about it more with the council. You know, this probably isn't the right item, but that's something that could come later.
Under what, though?
I would look to the council for policy direction on that.
We only just recently adopted the sewer master plan, so our sewer budget, sewer impact fee revenues are fully, they're fully budgeted for this project and others into the future. So, in terms of, I'm not sure I quite understand, but in terms of a program that would actually fund the residential side of the lateral.
That would have to come out of some other budget.
That's an enormous cost, out of a fund that doesn't have it, doesn't have, there's no, the only way to pay for that would be to raise everyone else's sewer rates in the city. There's not a surplus in that fund in the long term, given the master plan that's just been adopted. If the question was whether or not you could coordinate inspections of, if a resident, if a homeowner said, "I want to, since you're going to be in there replacing the lateral, I'm going to do the opposite of what you said, Mr. City Manager, and instead I'm going to, I'm going to replace my lateral at the same time." Could you inspect while you're doing your own work? That's, that seems like a somewhat different matter in terms of whether, you know, whether there could be economies of scale of the whole neighborhood doing inspection at the same time and concurrent with this project. But in terms of a brand-new program to just fully fund everybody, to give everybody free sewer lateral replacement, I don't know how you would contemplate doing that in any, there's no upcoming agenda item under which that's, it's not in our strategic plan, it's not in the sewer master plan.
And that's what I'm suggesting. It would have to come through something like that process under, and it would have to be under some other budget, because, like you said, the sewer fund isn't.
Right. Not the sewer fund.
Yeah.
No, it wouldn't be that. But it would be, I don't anticipate we're going to have a flood of people coming in to change, you know, their sewage lines. It would be something, because it's in the process, that if, you know, I don't think that the city process where they're going to be looking at assessing what the, you know, what the compromise is in the city's side, that they would be going into the homeowner's side. I think that should be done separately by the homeowner. It would only be if the homeowner sees that theirs is compromised, and this process is already taking place in their streets. I don't think it's all the state streets from what I read in the maps. It's certain streets, and we haven't even gotten down to the point where, if we're even going to be doing that because of the cost.
Yeah. The inspection of the laterals, because of the number of them, is very expensive, and it's not budgeted for in the sewer master plan currently. But my experience coming from the Sacramento area sewer district, which I worked at for about eight years before I worked here, I know that they cost more than maintaining the mainline sewer. So, it's something we should look at, and it's something that we should be prepared for, that it's expensive and it's a big task to own the sewer laterals. So, I wanted to look at some of them to understand what the condition is of them.
Okay.
Because we don't, we don't have a good idea of what the condition is currently.
What do we do with that information?
Well, that information would be good to know, because then we could plan in the future to do lateral, upper lateral replacements.
On the homeowner's side?
No, on the city's side. So, lower lateral.
On the city's side only.
I'm sorry.
So, the lower lateral?
The lower lateral is the city's side. The upper lateral is the homeowner's side. We wouldn't touch the homeowner's side.
Right. No.
No.
But it would be up to the homeowner to, while the lower lateral is being inspected and assessed, that the homeowner would say, "Well, if you're doing that, I want to inspect mine as well?"
Yeah. We could look into giving them information on local contractors that do that sort of work, and particularly the one that's out there. I don't know if that's allowed, but.
And are the residents aware of this? They received a letter notice or something that this is being considered, or is that going to happen down the road as far as outreach?
As far as outreach, we've sent out a letter saying that we're doing the sewer and water projects. We haven't talked about the laterals yet.
Okay. Okay. You know, I guess, so will it be like a workshop, or will it be just an, you know, informational notice, and if you have any questions, please give us a call?
Well, we'll probably do both.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll have significant outreach for this project, being the state streets neighborhood, which is an important neighborhood in the city.
It is.
And we'll be working on many of the streets, if not all of them, so.
Right. And your report validates that this is just long overdue, you know, it's an old neighborhood, and, you know, it's something that, you know, it would impact us if we wait any longer at the expense of the city.
Yes. The mainlines are in poor shape. They're badly corroded. The concrete corrodes over time from the H2S gases, and we've seen collapses already in the sewer lines. So, our crews went out and were able to fix them, but it's pervasive throughout the entire system, so something needs to be done. I think a cure-and-place pipe alternative would probably be the most inexpensive, but we'll look at all the different alternatives.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandin?
And Mr. Ray, we received a slip page on our, at our desks on this item.
Yeah. Thanks for noting that. All right. All right, then. Item, thank you. Item eight is consideration of project approval and adoption of Resolution 19-32 certifying the initial study mitigated Navy Declaration, mitigation monitoring plan, and findings of fact for the West Capitol Avenue Road Rehabilitation and Safety Enhancement Project.
Okay. Well, in reviewing, hi.
Good evening.
In reviewing this, I had a couple of questions, and one question is, one question is each for police and fire. As we look at the West Capitol Avenue Road Rehabilitation and Safety Enhancement Project, for the police and the fire department, that question is going to be, you know, the preparation for the impact to providing services. West Capitol Avenue, you know, does have its own, you know, activities that go on and access, you know, from one end to the other of the city for the fire department, you know, just making sure that things are running smoothly, we're completing times to be able to get to the destination as we currently have. But for police and fire both, I'm wanting to also find out, making sure that when the roads are, you know, we have the striping and the lighting, that your contribution is included, and just want a little more background on what's been accomplished there.
Candido, could you give some background on how Public Works coordinates with the public safety departments on Public Works projects?
Sure. So, up to now, for the last eight to 12 months, we have engaged these two different departments and also the public in developing concept, and now it's about 95 to 100% plans. So, we, it hasn't necessarily been these two gentlemen, but other gentlemen from those departments. So, we've incorporated their thoughts, their ideas, their requirements into the plans. And with regards to the, I believe you indicated about the traffic issues and accessibility to some.
To their destination. If there's a police call, there's a, you know, or, you know, for the fire department, they have to get to their destination if there's any road closers or anything like that. But also making sure that the needs that we have, you know, in West Capitol Avenue to enhance safety, pedestrian, bicycle, all of that, if your contribution, what's your contributions?
Absolutely. So, we, our prevention division works closely with Public Works and the contractors on all these projects to assure that we have access to every address. We're updated, the crews are updated daily on any access issues. We find alternate routes, those kinds of things if we have to. But we have not found an issue, because we stay pretty close communication with everybody during the projects.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, that's one of them. And then the other is, you know, as for both of you, as we looked at, you know, increasing, you know, the safety of the roads, you know, to prevent accidents or things like that, what your contributions were from. Historically, you've, you know, had dealt with all those issues, both of you.
Yes, ma'am. From the police side, obviously, West Capitol has been an issue for us for some time. We've had a number of different significant collisions in that area, as we're well aware. We've been working with Public Works for quite a long time in anticipation of this enhancement program that's on the table here. So, you know, and there's been a number of different factors that have been discussed over a period of time. Also, as it rolls out, the actual safety measures that would be conducted during that time will be obviously contracted out, but we monitor, along with Public Works, our two entities meet every two weeks, or a traffic impact team meeting where we discuss all issues with traffic, whatever it might be, from, you know, speed issues to this particular issue, and we'll monitor it, you know, for the course of the actual, you know, construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on item eight? Mayor Orozco?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that along the last few years, we've been hearing about this item, that we've been getting updates from our chief and West Act Police Department, lead officers regarding incidents on West Capitol Avenue. And I think that this project is going to only enhance our ability to respond to incidences and also decrease any of the factors that lead to, you know, issues with our public safety. And so, I look forward to taking that feedback in response to incidences that have occurred and our Public Works Department working closely with those and making sure that our new and improved West Capitol Avenue is a great asset to the city.
Yep. This is a key milestone in a three-year effort that's been underway to get resources from the state for rehabilitation and safety improvements on West Capitol Avenue, much needed, extensive public outreach and participation, and of course, of course, the involvement of all the key city departments, every one of them. To my knowledge, we've never had, in the history of the city, either of the two safety departments report that they were unable to get to their destination as a result of a road rehabilitation or, say, other safety improvement project. The protocols that exist between the, between the departments of the city have been, have, I think in most cities, but certainly in ours, have always assured that safety has been preserved as we've enhanced, as we're enhancing safety over the long run with projects like this. So, I want to, you know, thank Candido and all the departments and their partnership along this, along this project to get it accomplished, because it's a big priority for the city for a lot of reasons that have already been mentioned, and this is an important milestone to step forward. So, thanks. All right. Item 10 is consideration of application to the 2019 AARP Community Challenge Grant Program and Resolution 19-40 approving an appropriation of $10,000 in Measure E funds for matching funds. Councilmember Sandin?
Thank you, and I want to congratulate you and us on the great success we've had so far. And just with regard to this one with the smoke detectors, I just want to encourage us to partner with the American Red Cross, who is already doing some of that in our city. I, in fact, was at a project they did last year at the Casa Mobile Home Park, just adjacent to City Hall. So, I think we could even build on this, and hopefully, we'll get this grant, because it's very, it is very needed, and that there are even more partners out there that we can expand the reach.
Yeah. Thank you. We've actually, this project was inspired by the project that you're referring to. We've actually already had a conversation with the Red Cross, so you're right on point. Thank you.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes. I just wanted to have the fire department come up and answer what your contributions were to establish what the needs are in our community and how, you know, the fire department's going to be involved as the project rolls out and we get the funding, hopefully so.
Sure. Good evening. Brian Johnson from the Fire Department. First of all, I want to give Mr. Robinson a lot of the credit. He did a lot of the heavy lifting with this project and, you know, moving our mission towards reducing risk within the city. He proposed the project to the Fire Department. We're happy to collaborate with him, especially happy for somebody to do a lot of the work for us. And moving forward, you know, we've provided technical assistance. We've advised on where to find the data and statistics needed to really hone in on the appropriate population within the older community, using the U.S. Fire Administration, National Fire Protection Association, local data as well. We're still scrubbing our data to really get that, so we can use those funds to the best of their ability. So, we look forward to working with Mr. Robinson and American Red Cross as well moving forward.
That's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So, those are the questions and comments on the consent agenda. Is there a motion with noting the modification that the city manager has provided for item seven?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. That brings us to item 12, which is consideration of Resolution 19-34 establishing a budget appropriation and contract amendment from McKeon Construction Incorporated for Fire Station 45 Emergency Repairs Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you tonight is a resolution establishing a budget appropriation and a contract amendment to McKeon.
Jeremy, did you turn the mic off? No, it's on the mic. It's on the base of the mic.
Okay. Okay. So, before you, this evening for your consideration is resolution or irresolution establishing a budget appropriation and a contract amendment to McKeon Construction for emergency repairs at Fire Station 45. Over the past few years, staff at Fire Station 45 have reported numerous leaks. Facilities maintenance staff has responded and made the necessary repairs over the years. However, after last winter, it became apparent there was a much bigger issue than routine maintenance when mold started to develop in the springtime after all the storms. Staff immediately worked with contractors to assess and start mold remediation, which was completed in June. In late August, council approved a contract with an engineering firm specializing in water intrusion and waterproofing systems. The firm began their field investigation and design work immediately. Unfortunately, due to the extensive time required and all the field work, the repairs could not be put out to bed and started before the next winter. Staff was in the process of implementing temporary winterization measures, but due to above-average rainfall and high frequency of storms in December and January, those measures were ineffective. In January, Fire Department staff observed extensive leaking. Staff followed emergency protocol and got a contractor on site to set up scaffolding and install commercial shrink wrapping around the entire east side of the building. That's where they were experiencing the most leaks due to the high exposure, the storms coming up from that direction. Once sealed up, McKeon Construction was contracted to remove the existing exterior plaster to investigate the extent of the damage and expose the original construction, so the engineering team could verify what deficiencies had led to the leaks. Up to that point, they had done spot testing and destructive testing, and had a pretty good idea, but this was, it also gave them the opportunity to actually verify that it was throughout that entire east side. So, they observed that while McKeon removed everything on that side and documented those, the issues that they found as they went. While McKeon was performing this work, more mold was identified on the first floor. The previous area that it was identified was up in the second story. So, when they came across that, we brought the remediation contractor back, and all those additional areas were remediated. Although all the rooms and offices immediately adjacent to the east wall have been remediated and cleared of any mold contamination, at this time, they're unusable, they're contained right now. Walls have been removed, drywall insulation, so they're pretty well sealed up. All the staff on that side, it significantly impacts Fire Administration operations as multiple staff members have been displaced, while their offices and then upstairs is the dormitory rooms, and all those areas are inaccessible right now. Based on the findings and verified conditions, the engineer has provided a detailed set of plans and specifications. and verified conditions, the engineer has provided a detailed set of plans and specifications to facilitate emergency repairs on the east side necessary to stabilize and secure the east side of the building and, and stop all the, the water intrusion. Staff recommends the city council dispense with competitive bidding for this portion of the work, given the urgency of securing the structure against additional damage and the continuing rain and storms. The current building wrap only has a useful life of 180 days, which actually started back in early to mid-January. So there's an imminent danger of the interior of the building being directly exposed to the elements if that starts to fail. Like just the, over the past week or so of the, kind of the storms coming and going and the, the sun starting to come out, that's going to be, cause additional issues. It's, it's one thing when the plastic stays saturated, wet, there's not a lot of sun. But as we get it more intermittent, that plastic's going to heat up and, and kind of start, start to wear out quicker. So. Once the building is secured and stabilized, the engineer will provide plans and specifications for the remaining repairs throughout the rest of the building. And the city, the city recommends competitively bidding, that, that contractor perform that work. That remaining repair package includes the same types of repairs as emergency work, although like I mentioned, it's, it's throughout the building. Those areas don't have the, the active water intrusion, although from the sampling of the engineer, they expect the same, same issues throughout the building and expect it to eventually fail as the east side has. Funding for the remaining repairs will need to be obtained separate from this request and staff will submit the project as a CIP budget request package. For these reasons, staff recommends the city council amend McKeon Construction's current construction contract to include all these emergency repairs mentioned and necessary to stabilize the building. This concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions or give any info.
All right. Are there questions before we go to public comment?
I have a question.
Okay. May Pretam Roscoe?
Thank you. Of the new request, do we have any approximate figure as to what we expect from insurance?
In regards to insurance, the insurance will, will cover the, the damaged areas, not so much, not like the windows, not the things that cause the damage, but the, the resulting damage from the water intrusion. So right now, it's estimated around 120,000 to 140,000.
Of the 695?
Yes, of the 695, yeah.
Thank you.
And for the issues, for the, for the issues themselves, I mean, this building's not that old. I mean, are there, I mean, are there flaws in the designer and the construction that are at work here or?
There, there are some issues. It was probably through, it's, it's a combination of things through probably just a detailing itself through the, the original engineer. It wasn't the, the best detailing or, or measures, flashings and counter flashings they could have used. There's a lot of areas they kind of did the bare minimum. And, and that's why they, they believe that that high exposure side is experiencing a lot more. Probably needed a higher level of design, similar to what this, this engineer is provided with the, the repair work. There, there's probably also, we, we have seen some other possible designs or signs of some defects and, and maybe even contractor didn't do it quite right. So there, there are those issues playing as well.
And are there potential recovery options in, in, in that regard?
Well, from what we've seen, we'll be on the statute of limitations on that. Another, another thing that complicates that is this contractor, it was at the, the down, during the downturn or at the beginning of the downturn, and they have gone out of business. So, so it's, it's tough. The initial review from legal counsel, I believe back in, in August is, is, we could probably look at it, but it, it probably wouldn't yield much.
My suggestion is that if you'd like, we can prepare a more detailed response for council. I'd rather not.
Very good. Yes, understood. We can follow with that.
Actually, I would like, I would like that because I think in this instance, we need to take this as a learning, kind of a, figure out how to go forward since we can't, we probably can't go backward to the builder that we need to.
I think that's why he's, what he's suggesting we not talk about.
Right, right, right. No, I know. But I just think, I, I would like to see that. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Garrelle?
So, reading the report and doing the tour, you know, the tour helped me to really get a better sense as to the magnitude of what, what we're going through and, and the urgency to get the repairs done. And you added in a little more with the sun coming in, you know, I got a sense of the timeframe, but with the sun, I now see that that's going to happen anytime soon. And just the whole wall itself, it's a lot of work. But we can only do, you know, we, you know, on city council, decision-making, can only, we can only do our best with the information we are given. And if, for example, this, this was going, this started off since the building was built, the problem. And if it wasn't caught on time, then the costs are incurred on the city at this point. And it's too expensive. And we need to take a look at this, you know, not, just fiscally, just wait, you know, just now we're seeing with the insurance not coming in at the level that it's going to be a huge cost and, you know, affecting all other services as a result of that, that we could have, you know, put this money out to. But also on the quality of life of, you know, everyone, and it's not just there, I understand, it's citywide and all of our other structures. And so just being on top of it, but also providing us with all the information that we need because, for example, the structural fitness of that building, you know, I'm looking at that, like maybe there was something else that compromised the windows being, you know, maybe the builder did a great job. I don't know. And then things shook around and, you know, everybody's homes, you know, get cracked, the new, the newer homes. But this is, you know, an area where the wind and the water and everything was there. And we're spending a lot of money.
Can I, I just want to suggest, if, if, given that we've, that we've asked our team to examine the issues related to construction and design, it would be prudent for us to not speculate or have a discussion about those issues in the open session, just for any.
Okay. Okay. So just wanting to have as much information as possible so that we can make the best decisions here moving forward on the expenditures that you're requesting for us to make.
Definitely.
Mr. City Manager?
I just wanted to point out, there is a reference in this to the, in the report that this item did at least, you know, highlight one of the reasons why we feel it important to, as the council prioritized in the, in the strategic plan, having a facilities master plan that deals with kind of long-term maintenance. This issue aside, it's something that we as a city and, and staff recommending that we, we start to plan ahead for on all of our facilities. So just want to point that out.
Okay. We do have a request for public comment on this. So thanks, Mr. Chaplin and Pat Flint.
And I can tell you, they've had water issues since day one in that building. So when a wall of water comes down, the first year you have a new building, you go back to the contractors. And evidently, that didn't happen. But I want to thank you for considering authorizing the budget to Station 45 for this emergency repair project. It's been an emergency for longer than just last year. Their living quarters have been compromised for quite a few years now because of black mold, regular mold, and the city not having the budget to go in there and repair this building. And this last year, they had to put plastic sheeting up. I don't know how much has been spent on Band-Aids for this building, but this contract is almost a million dollars to do these repairs. And I'm not sure that they're all the repairs that need to be done. This is a health and welfare issue for the men that live in that building during their shifts. And it has been. I hope you're negotiating in good faith this year with the Fire Department. It is your responsibility to keep our staff and employees safe, give them safe working environments, give them good facilities within which to work, keep them free of harassment. I understand also that our safety equipment, meaning fire engines, has had to have major repairs this last year. Their fire equipment is getting outdated. They need more advanced and updated equipment. They need equipment that they can rely on, that they can be responsible for because the public needs our first responders. They are our first in line for any medical or fire emergency. They're important to this community. I don't know why they don't have a replacement budget. They did at one time. I urge you to look into why they don't have one now. And they deserve to be treated better. All of our employees in this city deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. They also are going, you also have ongoing expenses. Even in this building, you had water leaks the first year. So you need to have budgets set aside for facility repair, facility equipment to be replaced. Excuse me. That scared me. And so you need to really look hard at your budget and what you're spending your money on and what the needs are for our community and our employees. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Sandin?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm trying to understand the Fund 208 versus 270. In the resolution, there's a whereas near the bottom that says the city has sufficient funds available in the general rehabilitation replacement fund, which is 270. But then the source listed at the bottom of the resolution is 208. I'm just, I'm trying to, throughout the report, I just was wondering, 207, 280, 208 or 270? Thank you.
That's an error on my part. It's 208.
Oh, okay.
Federal Facilities Fund.
Okay. So that whereas should be the facilities fund?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. Thanks. That helps me understand. Okay. So we'll just make that change when it comes to us.
Okay.
And this may not be a question for you, but maybe to the mayor, do these, these do not come up very often, where we don't go out for bidding. This is a very exceptional situation, given the magnitude of the issue. Okay.
And the urgency of it.
And the urgency. Okay.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm fully supportive of this. This is the, this is the appropriate action to be taken. Virtually everyone in the city that's done a construction project has, has had contractor issues. So this is not, there isn't, there is no immunity to problems like this ever in, in any of our facilities. Or I know, you know, 10, 12 years ago, when this school district was having severe problems with many of its recently constructed facilities at the time. It's just, it's just a normal part of the business. But it is, when it happens, it's the, it's the response that's important and the prevention in the future to the extent that we can. And I'm, this is one reason why the public safety of the community is about all the departments. And Public Works is essential for exactly this, this example. So I appreciate the work that Public Works and Finance have done in order to bring the, bring these repairs forward. We do budget for this. When there are questions about the city's reserves, this is what the city's reserves, this is one of the city's reserve funds is for facilities and equipment. And, and so this is an appropriate use of that. I also want to point out, because it's just important for the community, for folks to be able to go to sleep at night, there, that the ISO rating for the city and independent, the independent accreditation essentially of the Fire Department by, by an independent panel that's done, ranks us in the top 10% in the country in the, in all the standards, personnel, facilities, equipment, policies, training, the whole thing. So despite what's been said tonight, there should be no, no lack of confidence in either the department, the men and women of the Fire Department, or among the residents and taxpayers of the community for the investments that they have made over many, many years and continue to do so in, in facilities, in equipment, and, and of course, most importantly, in people. We have an outstanding department and we're really, we're really proud. And there is no cause for panic because we have one of the best in the country. So this is a, this is the right, this is the right plan. It will cost more, as you've said. So this, that won't be a surprise. There's no conspiracy involved. There will be additional requests that will be forthcoming, most likely, as you say, through the competitive process. But as, if they're necessary to be done in this, in this, in this way, I think the council, you know, from the, from both tonight and from prior discussions on this, have made it clear they want to get it done. So please do so.
One more question.
Senator Garrelle?
Yes. In the analysis, you, it references that the remaining repairs is a traditional low bid procurement bid package. Can you explain a little more what that is?
So that, that's just through the, the standard public contract code competitive process that we do on all of our projects. We put it out to bid, advertise through all the builders exchanges, the Chamber of Commerce, and, and do it. Usually, it takes more time. That's, that's, that's why the urgency is pushing this. It's usually an average of five to, five to six weeks of advertisement and pre, pre-big coordination and, and meetings. And then award, actually bringing it to the council afterwards. So.
And, and we're not making any compromises in the quality of the work and considering that?
No, not at all. Not at all. And that. Yeah. The mayor brought up a great point. The contractor that we selected, McKeon, were referred actually for, they've been doing a lot of this, this same type of work actually in the schools that you mentioned. This is, it's, it's pretty widespread. Everything went up really quick. And then, you know, with the downturn, everybody was hurrying up to, to get out. And there was, there was just a lot of, a lot of compromised buildings and, and it was done, done too quickly. So they're, they are a regular bidder. Just for reference, they, they actually, we had two project bids today and they were in the, in the top five on one of those. So we have confidence that it's, it's a, it's a good number and a reasonable number. So.
And from the time it started to that, so the shrink wrap that's laid up to the time that we need to get it done, how much time do we have left?
So we, we're, we're going to be right up against it. But this will give them the ability to get in there and start waterproofing everything else, the whole side. The windows, that's the other, the other piece of it is the windows are a long lead item. But they can get in and get everything around the windows prepped and, and ready to go. So they're, they're, they're going to be pushing, they would get in there right away and, and start with the plaster and then the sheathing and all those repairs. Get everything as tight as they can and then get the, the windows in. There's also, they also do have to take the waterproofing up and tie it into the, the roof as well. So there's, there's tying to the roof to be done. But they, just in regards to their schedule, they would get in, get going and, and likely be substantially complete, probably mid, mid-June is what they're, they're looking at is. But waterproof will be before that, aside from the windows. There's, there's going to be, they'll, they'll get everything done. And then as soon as the windows come in, they're, they're, they're quoting a six to eight week lead time on the windows. But they're, they're confident they can expedite it to a four to six. So right about the time they're, they're closing up the, the rest of the structure, they'll, they'll be ready for the windows to go in and, and finish it off.
Okay, good. And then is there any way to protect that wall? I don't know if it's just the weather that contributes to what, you know, just any way to protect that wall so it can mitigate any future impact like this?
Yeah.
Like building a wall outside or shade? I mean, I don't know. What?
There's, there's been a lot put into it. As I mentioned, this, this engineer has, just from the materials are far beyond what was previously spec'd. There, it's actually a full adhesive material that for, that you would see on the, more like a ice, ice and water shield, full adhesive all the way around on the building, or all the way down that side. It basically sticks right to the, the sheathing. It bonds to itself. So we're, we're taking all those kinds of measures. Additional flashing, stainless steel flashings around the windows and then extended or taller flashings that go around, around them as well. Those were some of the issues where the counter flashings just weren't big enough. So the water would come down, build up, and then work its way in that way as well. So, so those are all things we've considered in the, in this, this new design.
Okay, good. Thank you.
May Pretam Roscoe?
Thank you. I mean, it's an unfortunate set of circumstances, but as the mayor said, you know, we're not immune to human error. And in this case, we have a problem and the power is in the response to the, the problem. I am in full support of this. I think that the, the fact that we are prioritizing the health and safety of our city employees, regardless of what uniform they wear, because that's a human issue we need to respond to immediately. And so I'm in full support of this. And I'd like to, at this juncture... And so I'm in full support of this, and I'd like to, at this juncture, make a motion.
All right.
I'll second that with the amendment or the correction.
To the whereas clause on Fund 208.
It's not really amendment. Thanks.
Okay. All right, then all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none on that motion carries.
Thank you.
Chaplin, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, council calendar, Ms. Berlin?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. A couple of items that are coming up in the near future. It's not on your calendar, but April 11th, the Yola County Children's Alliance is having their Mardi Gras fundraiser. That'll be, so that's Thursday, April 11th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Galleria. And then April 15th through the 18th, the Police Department is going to have their spring break boxing camp again. That'll be at the PD Annex over next to the PD.
Do you know, Ms. Berlin, do you know which day the chief and the mayor pro tem are going to be boxing?
I think it's TBD.
Oh, okay, okay. Trying to sell tickets.
Could I ask a question, too, about the Yola County Children's Alliance is on April 11th? It looks like Washington Unified School District is also meeting up here that night.
Right. We're going to confirm whether that's correct.
It's just a typically boisterous event.
The raucous event, yes.
Because they like children, though.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so we're going to confirm to see if the board meeting got changed or if they know that there will be an event downstairs. And then April 20th is our Earth Day celebration and Spring Festival at Bright Park at 10:00 a.m. And then April 24th, we have two things going on, the YEDS Spring 2019, that's at the Woodland Community Center at 4:00, and then at 5:00, we have our Fire Department pinning an award ceremony in the Galleria. And that's it.
So is that the April 20th amendment?
The 24th.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
No reports tonight, thank you.
City attorney reports?
Having a report.
Staff director and members of the council. And we have no future item requests, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Marosco, seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none on that motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.